Okay, good morning, everybody. Welcome to the County Commission meeting for Santa Rosa County on Monday, May 20th, 2013. It's 9:01, and we're going to go ahead and get started. Start this morning off with a prayer, a little thanks to our Lord, and then followed by a pledge of allegiance to... With Commissioner Salter leading us in the pledge. You know, we all have children and grandchildren, and they say some of the craziest things and wonderful things sometimes, but taking my grandson home, my son Mark's still in Afghanistan, and taking Caleb to the house for the weekend to stay with us. And sunset was beautiful, as we see a lot in Santa Rosa County. He said, "Grandpa, that sure is a beautiful sunset." I said, "Yeah, everything God makes is beautiful." He said, "Yeah, you know, he made one man, and then he made one woman, and then he made this really, really cool garden." I said, "Well," I had never heard of put "really, really cool garden," but I guess he did. So let's give him thanks for that really, really cool garden and all the other wonderful things we have here in the county. Please rise.
Great heavenly Father, we just thank you, Lord. Lord, remind us of civility. Remind us, Lord, we're just stewards of that really, really cool garden that you've provided us with. Lord, we just ask that you protect our military, keep them safe, keep them out of harms way, all our responders and emergency medical people, keep everybody safe, Lord. Lord, just guide us in our thoughts and our speech, and we give you thanks in Jesus' name. Amen.
Please join me in the presence of our nation's flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you very much. I'll ask this morning if there's any add-ons. I'll start to my right. Commissioner Williamson.
No changes, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Salter.
No changes, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Melvin.
No change, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Lynch.
No changes, Mr. Chairman.
Anything from staff this morning? I do have one add-on. It's just an announcement from Lifeguard Ambulance, and we'll get to that in just a moment. At this time, I'll turn to Commissioner Salter for our report on economic development, and I do have one add-on in economic development.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You want to go ahead and do that add-on?
If you'd like. The add-on I have this morning is a letter from our governor. It's just a short note. It was addressed to myself, and let's see what the governor has to say. This is from Rick Scott, and it appears, you know, I haven't got it confirmed, but it's handwritten. It's a short note, so it says, "Chair Cole, how can I be helpful in job creation?" Beggar on there for Rick. So I thought that was a good way to start out economic development, to know our governor, finally, you know, we're not getting treated like the redheaded stepchild anymore. We're starting to get some recognition out of Tallahassee, and I think that's a good thing, so thank you.
In my response to his card would be, send the money. We have three other items, Mr. Chairman. One of them I'm going to ask that we delay, and that's the first one. Update on Pensacola Area Chamber of Commerce Strategic Plan by Jim Heiser, who is the president and CEO of the Pensacola Chamber. Jim, we'll delay that until your information person gets here. He'll be waiting on a PowerPoint to be delivered, so if you don't mind, we'll come back to that whenever that person gets here. Number two, discussion of reappointment of Robin Punko and Robert Ephrum to the Workforce Escarosa Incorporated Board of Directors. Here again, this is a reappointment, so I would move approval of those two appointees to Thursday's agenda without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Mr. Chairman, since you started off with a letter, a card, from the governor, I'm going to ask Shannon to come forward just very quickly and share with us our new unemployment rate, not only for our county, but at Escanby and across the state of Florida.
Yes, sir. The numbers were just released on Friday, and the unemployment rate for Santa Rosa County is, for the first time in four years, under 6%. If I remember correctly, it's at 5.8%. The Escanby is around 6.4% for a combined MSA unemployment population of 6.2%. Out of the northwest Florida area, Oaklusa County has the lowest unemployment rate of under 5%, but we're all beating the national average and the state of Florida average in terms of unemployment. So things are working. People are getting back to work. The... We're doing what we're supposed to be doing, so...
I just want to commend everybody for all the good work. I think, like you said, the economy's changing, and we need to make sure that we're out in front as those opportunities occur in the future.
Yes, and I'm sure Mr. Heiser's presentation, I mean, it shows that working on a regional basis with the Pensacola Chamber and working with them and working with the Florida's great northwest, we are moving forward and getting our name out there and showing the world that northwest Florida's here, and we intend to play in this arena, and that we are moving forward.
Very good. Thank you. Mr. Chairman, here again, that concludes my report with the understanding we'll come back to Mr. Heiser whenever that opportunity gets here.
Thank you. And we'll go back to economic development, as Commissioner Salter says. I'll go ahead and start now with the Administrative Committee. First thing, the add-on that I have is just an announcement that Lifeguard Ambulance Service has completed Phase Two of its... Four in its facility expansion. Y'all, everybody here in the county, I think, knows the outstanding job that Lifeguard Ambulance does. It's basically raised the bar and provides way more than the service contract asks for. They've just built a new facility to, just strictly for servicing their vehicles. I believe they refer to it as the Garage Mahal. And being an auto mechanic and owning your garage, I'm probably going to get out there and get jealous about this thing, but on Wednesday, on Thursday, I'm sorry, on Thursday, May 23rd, at 12 o'clock, they're going to have kind of a ribbon cutting for that facility in conjunction with EMS Week activities. The location is 4340 Avalon Boulevard. Lunch and refreshments will be served at the ceremony, and Commissioner Williamson was asked to read this, but we kind of split hairs when it comes to Avalon Boulevard. I ref... I'm on the east side, and Jim's on the west side, so Jim asked me to read this, but thanks for doing that, Jim. But we'll all be out there, and look forward to seeing everybody out there and thank Lifeguard again for the great job that they do here in our county and for our citizens, so... All right. Item number one is discussion of a waiver for nuisance noise ordinance requirements for Night Train Tavern, 8121 US 90 East Milton, for an outdoor ban until 12:00 a.m., Saturday, June 8th, 2013. Is there any discussion for members of the board on this?
Mr. Chairman, in your packet is... It shows the location on US 90. It's really not proximate to any residential houses. I had mentioned in the email that there had been a previous complaint at that establishment, and that was in error. That was another establishment, and that was my mistake, so you see where the closest would be anybody that lives on Persimmon Hollow Road, but it's a pretty good distance from there, and it's, I believe, it's still wooded, so I don't know that there's any reason not to...
And just for the record, I would like to read that John Fleming and his wife are making this request. They are owners of the Night Train Tavern in East Milton. He's also active-duty Army. He emailed us and regards this. It's a charity event that his wife and him are hosting on June 8th, 2013, at the tavern for four soldiers who were killed in action while serving with him in OEF 9-10 Afghanistan. They booked a large ban for this event, so they do need to request this permit, and without any further questions or anything, seeing none from the board, I'll move this to Thursday for approval without objection, and hearing none, it passes. Action number two is discussion of acceptance to title to a 14-foot dual axle utility trailer for Soil and Water Conservation District. I believe that should be from or for... Okay. For use as environmental education display.
Mr. Chairman, in your packet is the letter to me from Mr. Holland with the Conservation District, and this was a trailer, I believe, that had originally been obtained by Grant with Three Rivers RC&amp;D. They are titling it to... Or want to title it. It's using an educational display. They want to title it to the district, and that would mean the county. Trent Matthews is here, who is the Soil Conservationist. Trent, you want to... I just thought it'd be just for a quick second to remind the board of kind of how we sit, how we work with the Soil Conservation District is. Trent is a federal employee. He is the conservationist. They're in the Farm Service Agency out at the old... At the building on Dogwood. We provide the, I believe, the technical staff and the secretarial support. They provide Trent the vehicles and the building, or they leased the building from... They lease it from us now. So it's been a good partnership. They've got a board of five. Trent, you may want to just... If you stepped in, they've got a board, I believe it's of five, that they're elected among the farmers and...
Yeah, like I said, my... I'm Trent Matthews. Turn your mic on, Trent. Just... Okay, sorry. All right, I'm Trent Matthews. I'm the district conservationist with the USDA, Natural Resource Conservation Service, in partnership with the Blackwater Soil and Water Conservation District, which, like Mr. Walker said, is an entity of Santa Rosa County. The soil conservation movement was kind of founded in response to the Dust Bowl back in the '30s, and during those series of events, that was very public, but there was these type of problems persisting all across farms all over the nation, and so the federal government said that they would provide support to these counties and local entities if they would have local involvement, so that's where the Soil and Water Conservation District was formed. And in Santa Rosa County, like Mr. Walker said, we have four elected, non-paid elected officials who oversee our programs, where the funding's spent, the resources that we're in, the work that we do, and the county supports us in that. And in Florida, the districts are supported primarily by the local counties, and our four main functions in Santa Rosa County are for soil erosion, water quality. We maintain the soil survey for the county, and we provide, promote agriculture and improvements to agricultural systems, and provide education in those arenas. So, you know, because of our local support, we're able to leverage the federal funding. In the past five years, we've leveraged a little, right at $4 million in federal funds to do conservation projects on private lands, and that's where we differ than from other agencies, is that we actually work on private lands on a non-regulatory basis. So if people have water quality issues or soil erosion issues on their properties, they can come to us for technical assistance, and we can help them correct those without regulating them. And furthermore, we also are able to work directly with the county and the Board of County Commissioners during times of disaster or major storm events. Since 1990, we've leveraged over $9 million to repair roadways and make road repairs after hurricanes. So as far as educational, people are becoming more aware of their environment every year, and they're also very interested to know where their food comes from. So we've been getting a lot of, a growing trend, seeing a growing trend of people requesting us to come out and speak to their groups at schools, just do educational programs on environment and in agriculture. And a few years ago, we decided that we really needed an interactive display that we could use in these programs, so we built a soil tunnel in office. It's basically a four-foot-by-eight-foot wooden box that's painted to represent one of our primary soil types in Santa Rosa County. People and students can crawl inside of it and see what's below the surface, and the interactions that goes on underneath the ground to, you know, to help in that ecosystem and to help grow plants, and just how important soil is to their daily lives. So the problem with this is it's become more popular, and it's a very time-constraining to build this. We have to construct it each time we set it up. So, you know, we started looking at the possibility of getting an enclosed trailer to set up a permanent display, so we could just hook a truck to it and take it on-site and be ready to go, and we kind of got a little ahead of ourselves. We did get a grant from Three Rivers to purchase that, and they turned it over to us, ownership to us, and... But then we started, we realized that, oh, yeah, we're going to put this on the highway, so we do need to tag this, and that's what we're here today requesting that the county would tag our trailer for us so that we can start taking it out on the highway. And we do have commitment from Three Rivers RC&amp;D to maintain, or for general maintenance for the life of the trailer, so the, you know, we're not asking for any additional cost as far as keeping this vehicle up, just to tag. Thank you for y'all's time, and if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Trent, thanks for coming out today. Appreciate what you do, and agriculture is very important in the county to us, so... Any other questions, comments from our board members? If not, then I'll move this to Thursday for approval. Hearing none, it passes. Item three is discussion of proposal from CSX Transportation Incorporated in the amount of $228,150 for installation of pedestrian gates at Henry Street funded by previous approved TDC funding. This is a project that's been long in the works, and I'm glad CSX finally got the crossing improved down there. It's much better. We used to have a lot of complaints about that crossing. It, you know, the crossing's right next to one of our historical spots down there with the old L&amp;N Museum and Railroad Museum down there, so I fully support this, and... Any comments, questions? Mr. Walker, do you have any input on this? All right, and this will give us the ability to work with the city of Milton to extend sidewalks, eventually get all the way to Baghdad with our sidewalks. So a lot of great projects going on down there in that area right now, and without any other comments, if none, then I'll move this to Thursday for approval.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
You may want to add an additional part to that regarding the sidewalks. We do have an estimate prepared for doing the sidewalks just between, to tie to the sidewalks, the city's doing on Canal Streets with a project that's underway right now to the depot, not beyond that, but just from Canal Street to the depot. The estimate is around $16,000. We do need to get another proposal or two to contract that out, so you may want to... I believe the TDC funds are available for that as well, so you may want to include that in any action the board may take on Thursday to go ahead and approve funding for the sidewalk portion as well as the pedestrian gates.
Right. And can I ask, too, Avis, is that first estimate, is that piggybacking off the contractor that's already there?
That is piggybacking on the cities, the contractor the city uses.
Okay. All right, so it may be hard to beat that price since he's already mobilized and everything.
Well, actually, it's not Panhandle that's doing the paving project. This would be... Panhandle did submit a bid for the sidewalk construction, but they were a bit higher than a contractor the city uses for sidewalks elsewhere in the city, and so that would give us a better price to go with this different contractor, and that was recommended by the city to us.
All right. Okay. Mr. Walker, we get that on Thursday's agenda?
Yeah, we'll get that worked out.
All right, Avis. Thank you. Commissioner Melvin.
Just ask that we get a specific number by Thursday so we can take some action.
Okay. We'll move that to Thursday's agenda without objection, hearing no further comments. It moves. Item four is discussion of change order. Number three, to contract with Arrow Training and Rental Incorporated, adding 39 days to Baghdad CDBG sewer extension project as recommended by project engineer. Pretty much self-explanatory there. Project's coming along well, but do run into some times we've got to extend them a little bit. There's no cost, additional cost to the county, according to my backup. Am I correct on that? Okay. All right, so I'll move that to Thursday without objection. Hearing none, it passes. Discussion of Florida Division of Emergency Management Grant Agreement for Ramble Woods Drive Hazard Mitigation Grant Program, HMPG Drainage Improvement Project. Mr. Walker, or Mr. Blaylock, you want to take it?
Yeah, our recommendation, we had, if you're... If the board will recall, we had requested the reinstatement from the Division regarding that HMGP project. This is the contract that is to be reinstated, so we'll just ask approval for the contract at Thursday's meeting.
Okay. Any other comments, questions? Hearing none, it passes till Thursday. Item six is discussion of Hazard Mitigation Grant Program, HMPG allocation for Hurricane Isaac. Getting your backups in the book. Is there anything additional, Mr. Walker?
Did. Is the city of Milton is here, and if the board will recall, is that you had asked us to get with Pegasus Engineering, who is assisting us with the HMGP projects in working with the cost-benefit analysis to determine the feasibility of whether this project would be funded. We've gotten the initial information back from that group. Mr. Watkins, Mr. Ward are here. They believe they can meet the BCA. I'm not sure. I think our engineers, or some concern they can, but I mean, we just... Our only concern is we didn't want to get, we didn't want to get shut out, and I've explained that to the cities, that, you know, we'd like to at least have the option to allow rebuild to apply. And I don't know if both of us can apply. We just have to, we'll have to figure that out.
Anybody? Brian, anybody from city got comments, additions to that, please?
Hey, sir. Thanks for our opportunity. Brian Watkins with City Milton. We have looked at this. We did sit through, actually Gerald and I sat through a seminar with the State Emergency Management District on HMG applications. We spoke with a representative from the State Emergency Department up there about the BCA on this. We talked to him about how we would do it and what we'd do, and gave him some of the numbers we had, and he said, "Yes, that would probably work." He didn't see any problem with that. We have got a preliminary from the county's Department of Pegasus that it would work and do that. Now, in addition to that, we believe that it'd only take us about $100,000 to fix that lift station. I believe there's $183,000 in the allocation plus a 25% match on top of it. It takes the available funds over $200,000. So I don't know why we couldn't, and I think we should look into whether we'll both apply, and what the city doesn't use in the lift station, we'll let rebuild apply to home hardening, I think. I have not seen or talked, in my discussions with the state, to where that would not be, you know, they have not indicated that would be an issue at all.
I would, Mr. Walker, can we do apply like that or get it?
We'll have something worked out by Thursday, I'm sure. I'm sure we can. We can figure out how to word that. Our only concern is, and I understand the state told Watkins that it would work. They've told us before things would work, and then get into the deal, and it doesn't. So I just, I don't mean to poo-poo it, I just think we just need to be skeptical and be sure that we're, we have all our options open.
All right. Ms. Harris, we got our guru of grants here, so we'll...
Yes, you can. Both entities can apply. The LMS will draft a letter stating that the city of Milton is our first priority and lists their allocation at $100,000, and then the difference will go to rebuild, and rebuild is perfectly fine with that proposal. They just wanted to be able to put in an application, if possible, to assist additional residents in our county, and I'll continue to work with the city to provide whatever assistance throughout the application process.
Okay. All right, sounds good.
And we're happy to. It's just that, you know, this project's been on the county's LMS list for a number of years now. We've taken a couple of shots at trying to get it repaired. This does provide the wastewater protection for all of that lift station, for all of Highway 90 and all the way up Glover Lane, for all the residential and commercial operations, basically in the heart of the city. And that's one of the reasons why we are very concerned about making sure that we can keep this lift station operating during a hurricane or a high-water event, so...
And my comment would be that if it has to be one or the other, I would support the city getting the $100,000. All right. Any other comments? Yes, sir.
Good morning. Jerry Cooy, 6049, Arnie's Way Up. I believe I just heard rebuild Northwest Florida mentioned again. Is that correct?
Yes.
Did? Okay. I would like to remind the Board of County Commissioners that this organization has never yet gave a full accounting of any dollars that they have spent in their history. They have refused many opportunities to lay out completely what they do. I would like to point out to you that rebuild Northwest Florida has a management payroll in excess of $1 million a year. If you don't believe me, ask them. Lot of problems with this organization. About six, eight months ago, they had a lawsuit placed against them over improper bidding, which apparently they were guilty of, and engineering by the state of Florida called in to question the work. Now, I have not been able to find the completion of what the final analysis was on that, but it's concerning to me that the state of Florida actually entertains questioning if their roof activities was actually making the structure safer as they claimed it was. Certainly, this is not the first time I have come forward to speak about rebuild Northwest Florida. The reputation of Santa Rosa County is very important to me, and I would ask that all of you look very deep before you go down a road with them, that you understand what they spend their money on, that you understand their salaries, that you understand well over $1 million worth of management salaries, and that you question what they've spent the money on, because to date, they've pretty much refused to do anything to give... Because to date, they've pretty much refused to do anything to give any relief, to give any understanding to anybody on how they've spent upwards of about $30 million worth of grant dollars. So, in all fairness, I felt you needed to know that, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moved that without objection, hearing none, it passes. Item number seven is discussion of memorandum of understanding with the University of West Florida. And we all have seen that some of the growth that we've experienced at the university. The purpose of this memorandum of understanding is that the parties recognize the benefit to be derived from increased collaborative cooperation and interaction for further promotion and understanding of mutual goals for furthering the health, education, and welfare of the people of the state of Florida and Northwest Florida region. The scope of this MOU sets forth the intentions of the parties for increased collaboration, cooperation, and interaction, and does not create a legal binding commitment. If the parties agree, later agree, to undertake specific joint projects with legally binding obligations, they will be developed separately with written agreements for such. Says each party's responsible for their own costs. So I think this is just laying some groundwork for, a lot of times we'll put in requests to the university for educational studies or numerical studies from their economic department. So it's, I believe we're just laying some groundwork for that, and it's a good thing to have all this in place. Ms. Jones, I believe, would keep us advised of any contracts we enter into, so. Mr. Melvin?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I met a couple of months ago with Dr. Benz in her office, and amongst the things we discussed was this memorandum of understanding. And what this will do is formalize an informal arrangement that we've had with the university quite some time. A lot of times, opportunities come their way that they've agreed to make us aware of, that we can partner with, and to extend a helping hand to us in a more formal type way. So it just, it formalizes the agreement, and she's been trying to, she, the office has been trying to formalize these agreements with the other counties in the area. We're first out of the chute with this, so we've beat our regional partners and competitors on this particular stroke.
Any other comments, questions? All right, great, we'll move this Thursday without objection, hearing none, it passes. Mr. Salter, Mr. Jim?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Jim, you ready? Or do you need a few more minutes?
This time, we'll go back to Economic Development Committee, and we'll come back to item number eight on administrative after this brief announcement.
Well, again, I'm going to apologize, Mr. Chairman. The presentation will soon be ready to go here. Shannon has it in his email box, so we're just making sure we get it transferred over. But before we dive into that, what I want to do is start out by asking Bob Larkin, who, as you know, chaired the steering committee for our two-county Economic Development Strategic Plan, to talk a little bit about how the plan came about and how we got to this point. So, Bob?
Thanks, Jim. The role of the steering committee was to select a consultant and then work with that consultant to build a strategic plan and deliver that strategic plan to West Florida. There were 45 members of that strategic planning committee, including Commissioner Valentino from Escamby County, Commissioners Cole and Salter from Santa Rosa County. Mr. Ogletree was also a member. That committee and the consultants interviewed 86 people from both counties in personal interviews, including most of the people in this room, as well as focus groups. And we received, the nice part of it is, we received unanimous support for that strategic plan from the strategic planning committee, as well as from the Vision 2015 Cabinet and the Chamber Board. And frankly, gentlemen, we're looking for support from you all as well. Thanks.
Again, I want to thank Bob for his outstanding leadership with respect to this effort, and I thank you all for your participation and commitment to this project. You know, stealing from my first couple of slides, this, as I think we all know, was unprecedented. We have never looked at economic development from a two-county standpoint. And it's really kind of silly for us not to look at economic development that way because we have mutual objectives, our economies are linked, and we have mutual issues and obstacles to overcome. The, if I may, I want to, the last time that I was here, we talked a little bit about Vision 2015, and I want to thank you all for stepping up in Vision 2015. I'm very pleased to report that, as of today, we have 122 individual investors in Vision 2015, and we have raised close to $8.9 million. Of course, the original, the original goal was to raise 6.5. And so the bottom line is that we had the resources to have the kind of success that is necessary for us to move the community forward. Also, you may remember that the original objective with Vision 2015 was 3,000 new jobs. And I'm very pleased to report again that thus far, through Vision 2015, we have announced just over 2,700 of those 3,000 new jobs. In other words, we're closing in on 92% of our goal. Have all those jobs shown up in the economy? No, and clearly, the Navy Federal project helped us in a big way get to where we are with Vision 2015 and our job announcements. But the average salary for those 2,700 jobs is $52,000 a year. And so the original objective for Vision 2015, great, okay, looks like we're up and running. The original objective with Vision 2015 was, we wanted to, we wanted to end up around $38,000 a year average salary. Because our two-county average is about $34,000. And so we wanted to raise the bar economically, and so I'm pleased to report that we are blowing that out of the water. The other thing that I want to mention is that we have a benchmarking and metrics task force that's chaired by Ron Jackson of Salt Marsh. And their objective is to review all of the projects the staff brings forward that we've been involved in, to see if we want to include that in our jobs total. And Navy Federal was, Navy Federal really for the committee was a slam dunk because we were very much involved in securing the 4-H property. There are other projects that we know that are not something that we ought to take credit for. Great example of that, and this gives me another opportunity to congratulate you and Shannon on your recent announcements in Santa Rosa County. Our staff was only involved in those projects peripherally, and so we're not going to take credit for those as part of our total job count unless the chamber staff was directly involved in making that happen. So are we have, do we have a... Oh, great, we could... So I think we've covered this territory, and so... I want to start out by saying that, then again, I know we had Commissioner Cole that was involved early on when we selected Chabin Concepts to be our Economic Development Consultant. Chabin Concepts is a firm, this is the third time that I've had the opportunity to work with them. They subcontracted with Tom Tickner. I think you all are familiar with Tom Tickner's work. This is the fourth time that I've worked with Tom on a project directly. And so I have a lot of faith in that consulting firm. There were other consultants that are also very, very qualified to do this project. But I think that the steering committee made the right decision in hiring Chabin to lead us through this, and I think Chabin's based in Chino, California. But this was one of the things that, sometimes we forget why economic development matters. But these are just a handful of the reasons why economic development matters. With the decline in young working population, we have far too many of our young people that are living in poverty. We have declining real household income, but every other metropolitan area in the country has that. And then very low civilian average wages. Escamby County is 79% of the US average, and Santa Rosa County is actually 68%. And then we just don't know what's happening with respect to the military. This is another slide that our consultants produced, but it happens to be one of my two or three favorite slides from the entire strategic planning process. As a community, we sometimes forget where it all starts. And I think that a lot of folks sometimes want to start it at quality of life. They want to jump ahead and we want to go straight to quality of life. But honestly, it all starts at the top with economic development. Economic development, quality jobs, increased tax base, leading to amenities and services, thus creating a quality of life. It doesn't start in the quality of life box, it starts with economic development. So the first phase of the strategic planning process, as I think you all know, was a readiness study or competitiveness study, comparing Pensacola to the communities that we compete with that are approximately our size on a regular basis. For example, Mobile was in the mix, Montgomery was in the mix, Columbus, Georgia was in the mix. And what they did was, they gave us an honest appraisal of, all right, how do you stack up? On this slide, if it's green, that means that we're sitting pretty competitive, from a competitive standpoint, standing up to those that we compete with every day. We're doing okay. Transportation, quality of life, business costs are all examples of how we compare very favorably. If it's in yellow, that means we're kind of in the middle. We maybe have some advantages, but maybe we have some disadvantages. And if it's red, that means that we are clearly behind the eight ball, and we have a lot of work to do. There are, and with, the good news with respect to everything that's in red is that we can do something about every single one of these things, except for the one at the top, which is location. We can't do anything about that. The consultant's point is that we just have to accept the fact that you can't supply to the south of greater Pensacola because it's water. Of course, the port is an example of where you can perhaps engage in trade. But that's why, for example, Memphis has become such a distribution hub. You can go north, south, east, west from Memphis, and that, their location is well positioned for that sort of thing. If I, we could stay with this slide just for a few more minutes. I'm just going to rattle through some of the other areas where we're just not, we're not as competitive. Teamwork, I honestly think that with Shannon, and I want to compliment you all for, Hunter, I want to compliment you on your hiring decision with bringing Shannon on board. I think that the teamwork between our two counties has never been better. And so, but as a region, we're still not great at it. Incentives, financing, venture capital, research, knowledge, innovation, utilities, infrastructure, and then we're going to talk for a few minutes about a couple of these items. One is real estate, and the other one is workforce. The, and I've complimented this commission before. Santa Rosa County is miles ahead of Escamby County with respect to site development. And, but we can't have, the report recommended that we develop, the strategic plan recommended that we develop 500 to 600 acres of shovel-ready certified sites in the next five years. And so that means both counties have a lot of work to do. The other area is workforce development. It's an important investment that we have to make in the two counties. The Airbus opportunities are interesting, but we have to understand that compared to some of the communities that are going to be competing for Airbus suppliers, we're a little bit behind the eight ball. We are, right now, wholly primarily or fully dependent on the product that's coming out of the Navy and the Air Force. We have some skilled folks coming out of the military and that want to remain in this area. And so until we can make some significant investments in workforce development, we're going to have to ride that pony. And so workforce development is another area. So this is just a quick summary of where we are with asset readiness and the comment that those of you who are able to attend the presentation by our consultants, you know, they made the comment that really, greater Pensacola is probably 20 years behind our competition with respect to site development. This is another one of those slides that I like, simply because it, these are the cornerstones with respect to ED. Number one is up there in the left-hand corner. We have to be focused on the basic sector. What's the basic sector? Well, the basic sector, these are folks that are bringing money from outside of our community into our community. The two projects that you all just did in Santa Rosa County are great examples of that. Navy Federal is a great example of that. Navy Federal is serving the entire world from Pensacola. And, but while a new fast food restaurant is great to have, that's not considered growth of the basic sector. Those aren't basic sector jobs. Those jobs are coming because the basic sector is driving it. So in economic development, what we have to do is we have to continue to drive the basic sector, and we've got to be focused on that and not be distracted by opportunities that are not basic. We've got to approach this regionally, which we are in this community. It's important that the public and the private sector be involved in this economic development game, in the strategic plan. We had the public and private sector arm-in-arm in the development, and it's got to be long-term. This community has never established a long-term path as a two counties and pursued that. And so this is a really important aspect. So, in the strategic plan, what emerged from that was two game changers, 21 continuous improvements, including 54 action steps. And then the final piece of the consultant mission was to help advise us with respect to the opportunity coming with Restore. And so, then if I could move on, the number one game changer that came out of the strategic plan was the development of certified shovel-ready sites. And why do we want to do that? Well, companies want that, site selectors want that. At the risk of giving away my age, I've been doing this for long enough that, once upon a time, I remember when certified sites was just something that you'd read about in economic development journals, no one is actually doing it. When we would work a project, the site selector would come in, and they would evaluate your site to determine if it's ready. Well, what's happened, I think, is that time pressures have forced the site selection world to squeeze down the amount of time from start to finish for a project. They don't want to go to the point of studying a site whether it's ready or not. They want a third party. They want a third party to tell them before they ever get to town that this site is certified. And so what we're seeing more and more, and I know Shannon sees this, is that when we have a lead come through, more and more if it's for a greenfield site, they're asking for certified sites. They don't even want to look at us if it's not certified. And so it's, when you're in the investment business, whether you're a local expanding company or whether you're a company that's looking to come in, what you're trying to do is you're trying to mitigate risk. You want to do everything you can to lower the risk. Certified sites lower the risk. So, and as I say, it helps local companies too. And then it serves, it develops as a differentiator for us. Okay, Alabama has over 20 certified sites. Southern Mississippi has maybe 12 or so certified sites. Florida, the whole state only has one certified site. This has not been an area of emphasis for the state of Florida. So if in northwest Florida, we have a couple, three certified sites, that differentiates us from the rest of the state and is something that would create activity versus other parts of the state that would not have that opportunity. And so what are our opportunities for certified sites? Well, of course, I want to salute Gulf Power for their certification program and congratulate you all and thank you for jumping on that with them. Because right at the top of the list, according to our consultants, is the I-10 Business Park, the 90-acre I-10 Business Park. You know, we think, I'm sure you would agree, that with some modifications there, that park is certified ready. And so I would fully anticipate that within a year or so that we'll have that park certified. Also in Escanbia County, we're working on the OLF land swap. There's still a lot of territory to be covered before that's ever going to become reality, but we're chipping away at it. And as you can see there with the 460 acres, if we by chance in the next couple of years could pull that one off, then that goes a long way towards the goal laid out in the strategic plan to have five to 600 acres of shovel-ready acreage within the next five The number two game changer that came out of the strategic plan, and I'm not going to necessarily dwell on this because quite frankly, there are a lot of details to be worked out. But our consultants, this came about because very early on in the strategic planning process, we had some conversations about the Kalamazoo Promise. If you're familiar with the Kalamazoo Promise, if you attend a high school in Kalamazoo and you achieve a GPA of, I think it's maybe at least a B average or better, you're guaranteed to have a cost-free, tuition-free education at one of the Kalamazoo area schools or in southwest Michigan. And the idea, of course, with the Kalamazoo Promise is that is based on economic theory that if you move the needle with respect to education and workforce development, if you increase your educational attainment, then you're going to move the needle with respect to your economic prosperity. And so what our consultants did was they actually took the Kalamazoo Promise and they went in a little bit different direction. Number one, of course, we all know that we do have programs already in place. Bright Futures is one example. But the truth of matter is, is there are young people who are graduating from our schools who cannot afford a two-year or four-year education. And so with Restore coming, it's a tremendous opportunity for us to do something that would move that needle. And the other, there's a couple of other interesting aspects with this. You can see in key targeted areas, our consultants felt that, okay, this is just an example, without a gap analysis, it's difficult to get too far into examples. But if you have a young person who wants to study art history versus another young, versus maybe going into getting a certificate or degree in cybersecurity. The idea is we want to incentivize as many people as possible to go into those areas that will move the needle in the most dramatic way, maximize our dollars. Because we can't afford to pay for everyone's education, no matter what they study. And so if we focus those dollars in those areas that are targeted towards our best opportunity for economic development success, then great. The other thing they suggested was to involve not only PSC and UWF, but also George Stone and Lachlan Tech. Our consultants felt like for the two counties to do this right is going to be 20 to 25 million dollars. The anticipation is that Restore Act would take, would make up a percentage of that. Clearly, there are going to be other grants and other opportunities to raise money. But we have a committee that we're setting up that's going to be exploring this further. But it's very exciting because as an economic developer, looking out over the next 10, 20 years, this has the potential to move that needle significantly. There are a couple, three other things that I want to touch on with respect to the strategic plan. Number two there is cybersecurity cluster. Of course, Quarry Station is the home to the Center for Information Dominance. We also have a branch office for the Department of Homeland Security there at Quarry Station. We've got employers, for example, right here in Santa Rosa County, you have App River. So we have, in economic development terminology, we have an emerging cluster with respect to cyber technology and cybersecurity. And one of the nice things is the average salary in that world is $85,000 a year. So those are the kinds of jobs that we want to focus on if we can. Our strategic plan talked about the need to focus on that cluster, to see what we can do about building that. And one of the first steps to do that is to form a cybersecurity council, which Mike Murdock with App River has agreed to chair. And so we couldn't be happier that the, really the area's leader with respect to cybersecurity has agreed to step that up. Another area that our consultants landed on was streamlined permitting process. They felt like that in Santa Rosa County, the process for developers isn't too bad, but their observation was that we need to do a better job in partnership with you in laying out the steps in front of the developers before they do a project to say, here's what, here is, here are all the steps you're going to go through from start to finish with respect to your project. Our consultants also mentioned the need to upgrade the Chamber ED facilities on Garden Street. And then also the need, particularly in Escanbia County, to, for the Chamber to promote some of the mentorship programs and the, like the Big Brothers, Big Sisters programs that, to assist with the at-risk youth. Again, at the risk of restating the obvious, continuing to retain, attract key armed services commands, that remains obviously an objective for both counties. Number two is to accelerate entrepreneurship, help UWF in the development of a center for entrepreneurship, expand our incubator space that we're already, the Chamber's already operating in partnership with Pensacola State. And then we need to get serious about a venture, venture capital forum of some sort to assist the entrepreneurs. And finally, with respect to narrowing the workforce gap, it's been a very long time since UWF, Pensacola State have done a gap analysis with respect to skills. And so it's, we're past due in handling that. Another thing that you're going to be seeing is an outtake from the strategic planning process is that there's a recognition on the part of our consultants that there is not a broad understanding of economic development concepts in northwest Florida. And so these are, these sample ads are probably poor examples. We have in-kind investments from some of our media partners. In other words, we have free ad space from some of our economic development partners in Vision 2015. And so you're going to be seeing more of these kinds of ads where we'd simply promote the concept of economic development. Why is economic development important? Why should folks support that? And if we could, in closing, I think that our consultants talked about, again, these are recommendations for the Chamber that, you know, as a community, we need broad recognition of what economic development is all about. Through Vision 2015, we've gotten to the point where our, the Chamber's efforts now are 60, 65% privately funded. And they thought that that's a good mix of private and public sector support. During our consultants' work here, they saw some examples of confidentiality for projects not being followed by folks in the community and so the importance of confidentiality, working together, and the business education partnerships. And so that is a summary of the strategic plan. Again, we very much appreciate your support of this project. I'm asking today, you don't necessarily have to vote today, but I would very much like to see the Santa Rosa County Commission endorse and/or salute the strategic planning effort. Would love to have you on record as being supportive of this. We're asking the same thing of the Escanbia County Commission in an upcoming meeting. And I'm here to answer whatever questions you have.
Any questions from anyone? Mr. Coe?
Thank you. Jim, thank you very much for this. Couple of things, the OLF-8. A lot of folks may not understand what that is. I didn't at first. Almost thought it may be a bad deal for Santa Rosa County because here Escanbia is looking to obtain OLF-8. In doing so, they would have to get a mirrored image of that landing area and they've located that in Santa Rosa County. And if you will correct me if I go wrong. My thoughts are 400-some acres basically would come off the tax rolls in the future for economic development and become a military site. And I thought, well, how does that benefit Santa Rosa County to lose that acreage off future tax rolls at maybe a subdivision one day or whatever, you know, as the community grows? But then I thought about it on the other side. It enhances our military presence. It helps us with BRAC because now we have another military installation on here to support Whiting Field. So when you start thinking about it in those terms, it's beneficial, again, to both, a joint county effort that we're trying to provide. In turning OLF-8 into an industrial area, everybody isn't going to live in Escanbia County that works there. So we're going to see growth in our tax base there. So I was much more comfortable after we discussed that in one of the planning processes. I like, I think we put too much emphasis initially over the last couple of years on Airbus and Tier 1, Tier 2, because Mobile has Airbus, that's a done deal now. But they're not, Baldwin County's hot on the tracks of Tier 1, Tier 2, Mississippi is. So I'm glad to see we've kind of diverted a little bit from just focusing so much on Airbus. And cybersecurity is something I think we should do, but it can only grow so much. So I was glad to hear you say we're going to diversify a little bit. Manufacturing, distribution, I think are two big areas that we need to concentrate on, and aviation because of our area, but outside of the bus. You know, how do we get off the bus and onto some other things? Private aviation, I think is a, in fact, at one time, one of the Gulf Power symposiums that I attended, I think two years ago, said that this largest industry in the state of Florida is not Disney World and not fruit and oranges, it's private aircraft. So that was a big surprise to me. And finally, I'd like to see us, even though we've targeted five years for this, I'd like to see us shrink that number down as much as we can because it is important. Baldwin County, we see the rapid growth they're doing in industrialization over there. These folks that you mentioned from our Air Force and our Navy that are, want to stay in the area, want to work in the aviation industry or Tier 1, Tier 2, off the bus or whatever it is else it may be, Baldwin County is not that far away. It's not that much different of a lifestyle to say, well, if I got to go over there to get a job when I get out of the Navy or out of the Air Force, but that's not going to happen. So even though we have, I think, a lot better, you know, quality of life to offer, it's, you know, when you get right down to brass tacks, it's not really that much difference. And those military EPIs or gals are used to moving anyway. So I think we need to really sharpen our pencil, get to work as hard as we can on certification, on getting these advertisements out there, going after them, you know, tooth and nail like you're doing, like Shannon's doing, and just, you know, bring in as much as we can. And like I said earlier, that letter from the governor shows that we have support of our governor in anything we're doing over here. I think all these efforts is the reason I got that note, that he does recognize that.
No question, you mentioned the governor and his commitment to job creation is paying off in a big way for our state. Our unemployment rate's coming down in the Pensacola metropolitan area, but it's coming down statewide. We're adding jobs, we're battling Texas to be number one in the country right now in terms of adding jobs. And that big part of that is because Governor Scott's placed such an emphasis on that. You know, Commissioner, you also mentioned the shovel-ready sites. I don't know how to, I don't know if I can even come close to overemphasizing this. I had a conversation with a local business leader just the other day and the conversation was, Jim, are you sure we really need these certified shovel-ready sites? I mean, we've got, we've got a lot of land around here. And all I can say, continue to say, is that we have a choice to make. If we want to be competitive, these are the steps we take. If we want to be competitive, if we want to be in the game, these are the steps we need to take. And so it's a choice we make. Do we want to develop shovel-ready sites? Do we want to develop our, invest in our workforce? If the answer is no, then we have to accept the results of that, of not proactively working on developing our economy and shooting for prosperity.
Jim, one thing, you said a lot of good things and obviously economic development, I tell people all the time, it's not just something you do, it's a process. And you've got to have all those pieces in place to have a successful process. But you've got to start with product, sites. And a lot of people don't understand that economic development is an investment in the future. You buy a site today, it may not become a reality for three to five years. But you can't wait for the prospect to show up and you go, well, we'll try to find you a site. So I totally agree with you that when you start to build that pyramid, you better have all your pieces in place and that site piece of it is a starting point. You can have the greatest economic developer in the world, but if he doesn't have anything to sell, he doesn't have anything to sell. You hit kind of another point and I've often You hit kind of on another point, and I've often said this, that small businesses are extremely important to our region, to our state. But most of those small businesses are service-related small businesses. And if you don't grow their customer base, they all compete for the same customer. So the best thing that we can do for small business is bring in larger companies that will give small businesses more customers.
Well said.
So when you start to look at economic development, you've got to understand the importance of large corporations and large businesses coming to your area, not only to create jobs themselves, but that's where your small business base grows as well, so.
Oh, that's, 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 that's very well said, Commissioner.
We appreciate everything y'all have done. I think, obviously, we're on the right track. I've had the good fortune of attending a couple of the meetings, and I'll get with Mr. Walker. And I would assume what you asked a few minutes ago was for this board to endorse the 2015 plan. So that's what I would recommend that we have on Thursday's agenda for that endorsement.
Thank you.
Hearing no objection, it passes.
Good.
Thank you, Jim.
Good. Any other questions? Again, appreciate this opportunity. It's always, always, always good to visit you all, and, and thank you for the job you're doing. You know, the, been around a lot of county commissions in my career, but this is the most, one of the most progressive county commissions that I've ever been associated with. So thank you for all you do.
That concludes my economic development report.
Thank you, Commissioner Salter. We'll return now to the Administrative Committee. Does anybody want to take a break before we do? No? Rock and roll? Okay. All right. Item number eight is discussion of proposals received for disaster debris and support services. Item number eight. Mr. Walker.
Mr. Chairman, in your pack, it is a memo from Mr. Whitfield. We had, we had retained the services of, as it turned out, it was SAIC for, in, in Dennis, we had done the, this particular function, debris monitoring and collection and monitor, obviously, monitoring those efforts in, done on our own in Ivan. And then we had contracted which, with BEC recovery, which essentially was absorbed by SAIC. You see, we advertised proposals. We'd received five. Mr. Whitfield, his staff had, had narrowed that to two, two firms essentially, and that would be SAIC that we currently have, but a Thompson Services Group that, that included a couple of the principals that had done the work in Dennis for us. Also, they had, they had the, a, a local engineering firm retained in, to kind of help in those regards. So I don't know that, that the board's going to, if the board wants to interview these. Typically, what you had asked before was, was that for staff, make a recommendation. And I'll get with Mr. Whitfield. I think, I think our recommendation should, should be the Thompson Group. He, he lays out the, the pros and cons of each. This is, is, in the event of, in the event of a disaster, is these costs are included in your, in your debris collection costs to be covered by FEMA. And we would recommend it. It's, we, we've done it both ways. We had done it on our own, and we had also contracted it out. And, and it's just, it, it's very intensive, the amount of time that it takes to, to manage that.
Mr. Walker, I did have a question. While I'm reading this, though, there could be a cost, quite an extensive cost on the travel expenses on Thompson over SAIC. They say theirs is included.
Yeah. And it, in, in, in recognize that, again, the, the, I, I think that the difference is that the costs are going to be covered by, by FEMA would have been what I, I would recognize. I think, I think, I just think the Thompson proposal more fully outlines what those, those costs would be. Avis, you may want to make a comment on it. You had made the distinction in the...
You may want to look at the spreadsheet we provided in your backup material for that. And, you know, and you have to make a lot of assumptions on the cost because the, the two different proposals carry different positions that they would utilize in order to accomplish the, the given task. And if you look at the spreadsheet specifically, the, the line for daily cost projection with mileage included, and, and there is less than a $2,400 a day difference between the top two, between Thompson and SAIC. But, you know, that $2,400 is, is kind of hard to, to, you know, it's based on several assumptions. The, the assumptions on the number of field monitors that'll be used, the number of site supervisors, project managers, things like that. And those are things that you have to kind of figure out on the fly once you get into an event. And one contractor may want to use more of those positions than others. So I, I don't know that you can put too much weight on that, on that $2,400 a day difference. And, and in the big scheme, if you had a, a $2,400 a day difference, even if you had that, if you do a, a six-week event, if it takes six weeks to clean out, clean up the debris in the county with that $2,400 a day difference, if you work seven days a week, which we usually do in that type of an event, I mean, you're talking about $100,000. And I know that sounds like a large figure, but usually these hurricane cleanups are $10 million projects. So relatively speaking, it's, it's not that much money. But again, even that amount of money, you really can't put that in concrete terms that it's going to be that much. Because, you know, Thompson may come in and use less, less of those supervisory positions to accomplish the task than what SAIC would. So it, it's kind of, we felt like both these were very, very close. And I think either one could do the job. I think either one would, would excel in performing the task. It's just as Hunter said, that, you know, we, we have more experience with some of the, some of the key leadership in, in Thompson. We've worked with these folks in the past, and they, they've done an excellent job for us in the past. And I think that was, you know, a key factor.
One of the things that I'd like to point out is, is I think we, and, and Mr. Whitfield's trying to place a dollar value on, on these proposals. I think that, that, that the way that works out is, is it, it highens the Thompson proposal and lowens SAIC because of the assumptions. The, the, I, I, I'm just saying, I, these are not hard bids. I mean, I think Avis was trying to put some kind of monetary, monetary numbers to, to something that, that doesn't easily convert.
Commissioner Melv.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm not sure I understood a lot of that, other than, than, these people provided these numbers to us. I assume that the on-site project manager, site supervision, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, we're using their numbers for those functions. And $2,400 a day is a lot of money difference if, if, if the firms are otherwise equally well-qualified. Just seems to me, I know this is only Monday, but it, that's my first take on it.
And, and I think something that I should point out is that if you looked at the, the actual proposals from these two, SAIC listed several more positions than what Thompson did. And so we don't know how many of those positions, and that, and that's part of the assumptions we're talking about. We don't know how many of these positions they would feel like, and of course, that would be something we would negotiate, but, but we don't know how many of these positions they feel would be necessary to accomplish the task. If they need, if they feel like for, for them to accomplish the task, it takes, you know, the, the ratio of supervisors to field personnel could be greater with SAIC. And, and looking at the proposal, you would almost assume that it would be. Thompson just listed less. And so, again, I, I don't know that we should put too much emphasis on the, on the $2,400 a day. Certainly, it's significant. It's significant to some degree that SAIC doesn't, they include the, the travel cost. And that's the big difference is the travel cost. SAIC includes the travel cost in their hourly rates, where Thompson said, these are our hourly rates. In addition to these hourly rates, you're going to have travel cost. But, but again, you get into an event, and, and I, and I believe that in, I believe that in, in our last event, I believe 100% of the monitoring was covered by FEMA. So, you know, I don't know that these would actually be cost to Santa Rosa. I think what we're, our primary goal is to get whoever we feel like will do the best job for us and pass, obviously, pass FEMA scrutiny, that, that we went through the proper procedures to select a, you know, a contractor for this. But, but we feel like that, you know, we, we have done that with either one of these. But FEMA's going to pick up the cost. These are not, in all likelihood, not going to be costs that are, that are passed on Santa Rosa County.
Okay. Well, what's the feelings of board? My personal feeling is that, you know, we have staff here to make these decisions for us. We've certainly been, this isn't our first rodeo, and let's pray we don't have a rodeo this year to have one. So I, I would, I don't see where we could do any good interviewing these folks over the experience that our Public Works Director and that department has and, and our, our county administrator. So I'd be for going with suggestion from staff. Commissioner Williamson and Commissioner Lynch.
Mr. Chairman, I would recommend that we review the proposals and vote on the top two on Thursday. And that way, you have individually, you feel comfortable one or the other and move forward.
All right. Commissioner Lynch.
I was, I was essentially going to say the same thing there. I think what we've heard is, we don't know what the cost would be. We really can't tell right now. All else being equal, you know, we've worked with, with Thompson before. They've teamed up with Southern Site and Utility Design, you know, Alan Miller and PJ McLeod have always done a great job for the county. They've been involved in EWP projects and, and debris removal from our waterways after Ivan. So, you know, they, they have the local knowledge that could very well come into play in an event of this, this magnitude that would require the engagement of their services. So, you know, the, the needle kind of leans towards them based on that alone. But, so let's wait, decide on Thursday.
All right. And what I'll move till Thursday is that each commissioner review the information, and unless we get a unanimous choosing on Thursday, then we would perhaps discuss interviews? Or no? Just, just let it go till Thursday? Okay. All right. We'll take it up on Thursday then. Move it without objection. Hearing none, it passes. All right. Item number nine would be discussion of proposals received for disaster recovery administrative services. Much similar to the last. Mr. Whitfield or Mr. Walker?
Mr. Chairman, as you noticed in your pack, we had received four applications, and these are services that we've, we, I, I was almost fixing to say that we've never, never, never had undertaken. I believe it was after Opel, when I first got here, that we, we actually, Santa Rosa County went through a procurement process, and we did have a consultant to do FEMA public assistance help with us after Opel. And it was, it was the worst of both worlds. We had a consultant, really, that was struggling with how to do it, and FEMA didn't know how to act like, you know, how to, how to, how to deal with them. And we spent as much staff time with consultants as we did on our own. We, the other events since then, we've done it on our own. Quite frankly, our budget director and Ms. Harris have, and then Avis and his, his administrative staff, all of our people, Ms. Simmons, all of our people have done a good job with it. It is an incredible black hole of time. It, 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 it's just, it absorbs time, and it's, it's incredibly difficult to, to get these things closed out. Mr. Watkins was talking about that HMGP, they tell you one thing, we'd get a new, we'd get every two months, they're going to tell you something else, and our people are trying to get these worked through. So a long story to say, we've received four proposals. The, the, there were two that were, were intriguing, the, the Whit O'Brien, which is a huge firm. They are a large firm. I believe Mr. Lynchard was involved with them in, they were the, I believe they were the project manager in the oil spill for Escambia County. They were, they were primarily functioning in that regard. It never occurred to us to have used anybody in that function, but they, they did. In my observation, they did a good job. They're, they're a huge firm. They could do this work. The interesting one in here is the Title Basin proposal, which included, they included people that had administrative experience with, with storms, but they had teamed up with the local accounting firm out of, out of Pensacola, the Brown Thornton Firm, I believe it is, out of Pensacola, in, in helping tracking those costs. Those were the two firms that, that staff seemed to be equally split on was, was, we had, as, as we always do, we had two for Title Basin and two for Whit. I think just, but again, this is a function we've never done. My, my inclination would be with the, the Title Basin group, when you look at, when you look at their, their experience and also their tying in with a couple of local people that I think would help us.
Okay. Commissioner Salter.
Mr. Chairman, I, I would ask Mr. Walker, would there be a potential conflict if we went with one to do the planning and the cleanup and the other one? I mean, you've worked with two different firms here.
We thought about that. We, we, we talked about it both ways. Quite frankly, is, is, is we thought you'd get the benefit of actually having two professional groups almost watching each other, if you will, or, or helping. We, we thought we'd almost get a, a double your benefit from, for having the two was, was our thoughts. And really, as you say, the only, the only tie-over in the two would have been the Whit O'Brien. And, and that is because they are probably, if not the largest, they're certainly one of the largest disaster management groups. We, we had thought about that, but I, I think that we, we were comfortable, and, and I'm comfortable, we know enough, and I don't mean to brag, but I think we've been through enough, enough events. We think that we, we would know if they're doing the job right, and we, we know how it's going to have to turn out. So I, I, I feel very good that, that we could work two firms like that.
Commissioner Williamson.
I would suggest that we do the same way that we're going to do on the one. Part of that is everybody review it and vote on Thursday. From the top two, suggested by staff. And this is no reflection on staff because I, 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 I take their word, but I, I just want us to review it, and then we'll vote and move on, especially since on this past one, it was two to two, and we've got five here, so we won't have any two to twos.
Okay. I agree that, and I appreciate staff doing all this preliminary planning. Prayfully, we won't need to execute any of this. Because whether you were on this board during some of the worst events we've had over the past 10 years, or just a citizen, what is primary in the hearts of all our citizens is get recovered, get back to normal. And in this county, he's done an outstanding job with that, and this will only help us do a better job if we should have to again. Thanks, staff, for your time, and we'll take this back up on Thursday. It's the suggestion of Commissioner Williamson on how we'll follow that on Thursday. Move that without objection. Hearing none, it passes. Item 10 again relates to this. It's the discussion of disaster food service agreement with the school district for meals during emergency operations. This particular item worked out very beneficial to everybody in the last events. Mr. Walker, you want to highlight us on this?
I believe that we had, had, had executed the contract. I, I know we did during Dennis, and I believe we had in during Ivan. We, we've done it every year since then. I think the, the one difference in this, this particular agreement is that it's for a five-year term, and then, and then you see the, the exits in there. And that was, the, the school board was comfortable with that. We're actually, the contract is with the school board. Now, they, they have, may or may not have the same contractor that they do now. Their, their, their service provider or food provider. And so our agreement is with them, same as Gulf Power has an agreement with them to provide the same services. It just, it's just the scale, scale of economies in there.
Mr. Walker said it worked out great during those last two events. So again, another item, and just a footnote on all three of these items, there is no cost to the citizens of Santa Rosa County. San Rose County to execute these agreements. It's just, you know, if we need them, they're there. And I'll move that to Thursday's agenda without objection. Hearing none, it passes. Item 11 is discussion of easement for electrical services with Gulf Power for Central Landfill. Mr. Walker?
And this is just an easement that you see from Gulf Power. I believe they're going to, you know, as in the past, they're going to provide some service, and then we have to... We just provide them an easement for their land. Is that correct, Roger? I'm assuming.
No other comments? We'll move that to Thursday without objection. Item 12 is discussion of amending the City of Milton wastewater franchise area to include the area previously granted to Sundial Utilities Incorporated. We discussed this at our last meeting. We have representatives from the City of Milton here, so any comments or questions? Ms. Jones, I see you reaching for your button.
I'm sure you're familiar with the background in that you all grant franchise areas to different sewer providers throughout the county. Sundial Utilities, I believe, was recently acquired or is in the process of being acquired by the City of Milton. So, this amounts almost to a transfer of Sundial's franchise area to the city.
And this will actually be the third time, I believe, we had... The two other small wastewater systems we had were transferred to the Pace Utility District, and this is actually the third and final of the three that we have. But then you see in the... In your backup is a map that just shows this would just... It's actually come south of Baghdad, and Milton has that area in Baghdad.
Okay. Anybody from the city like to say anything? If not, we're going to move this to Thursday's agenda. I don't hear any objections, so... All right. Moves to Thursday without objection. Item number 11, or, I'm sorry, number 13 is reminder of public hearing items scheduled for 9:30 a.m. Thursday, May 23, 2013, which is a vacation of the rear 25-feet setback of Lot 1, Block H, in the Woodlawn Height subdivision as requested by Julio Bunzagani. Anybody here? But we'll have that public hearing this Thursday. Okay. At this time, we'll go to the engineer's report. Mr. Blalock.
Our first item is a discussion of approval of the Plumery Platt for Heritage Oaks. This is a 40-lot subdivision in which the board had reviewed previously for the vacation of Big Loop or Oak Loop Road... Loop, is that correct? Big Oak Loop roadway, and now we have a Plumery Platt, and they're going to provide the temporary turnarounds that were described and approved in that vacation.
Mr. Blalock?
Yes.
One of the concerns that we expressed when this was going on was the safety factor of this entrance and some other, like the, I think, the store across the road and stuff like that. Have they addressed any of that with your department, or do they appear to be...
They have not addressed this in the Plumery Platt phase. That would be in the construction plan phase, and in that this is a DOT highway, they'll be responsible for getting a DOT connection permit for that roadway on Highway 87.
All right. I know we had no way of enforcing that, but I hope they'll take our comments to heart that we made that evening, so...
Yes.
All right. Go ahead, sir. And we'll move that to Thursday without objection.
Who's the developer on that? Who owns that? Is that the... Is that Navar School?
No. No, this is...
Eighty-seven. Okay. All right.
The vicinity of Holly Assembly of God Church is the general vicinity of this.
Okay. Thank you.
We will get that to Mr. Cooley. And then item number two is a discussion of the paved road and drainage maintenance for Tallwood Court. This was a small cul-de-sac that was improved through the MSBU process approved by this board, and this is the acceptance of those improvements. That concludes the engineer's report.
Move that to Thursday also without objection. Hearing none, it passes. At this time, we'll turn to Commissioner Williamson for our Public Service Committee report.
I think you'll turn to Mr. Lynchard for public service.
Oh, Lynchard. Excuse me.
I'll take it today.
Just make sure you guys are on the poll.
Wrong end of the poll. Item number one is discussion of acceptance of $1,500 in satisfaction of the HHRP second mortgage as part of the short sale agreement for the property located at 5362 Ticonderoga Street in lieu of foreclosure. I'll move this to Thursday unless there are any questions without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item two is discussion of approval of the ship's second mortgage subordination request for the property located at 6409 Linwood Circle in Milton. I'll move this to Thursday without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item three is discussion of approval of the ship's second mortgage subordination request for the property located at 5456 Pine Ridge Drive in Milton. I'll move this to Thursday without objection.
Saying none, it passes.
Item four is discussion of authorization for staff to begin updating the comprehensive plan related to 2011 legislative changes, minimizing extraneous language in the plan and making it more locally focused. I'm going to let Mr. Gomay and bring us up to date on this.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. As noted in Becky's memo, and as you're aware, and as you stated in the opening, the state legislature made changes to the provisions of our Chapter 163 and what was previously administrative rule 99-J-5, which drove a lot of rulemaking at the local level to comply with these state requirements. Since that has been changed, there are a number of things that need to be cleaned up and changed in order to coincide with these new state or lesser state requirements and really to drive the code to become more locally focused. And just to clean up any of that language that would be confusing and not consistent with what the law currently says. So, we would just ask to begin that process, which would go through the zoning board and then back to this board for approval.
Thank you, Mr. Gomay. Any questions from the board? If not, I'll move this to Thursday without objection.
Saying none, it passes.
Item five is discussion of local funding for proposed projects referenced in the draft Florida-Alabama TPO Transportation Improvement Program for FYI 2013, 2014 through 2017 and 2018. Mr. Gomay.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. It's... We're just at the point where we're looking for guidance from the board relative to the projects that are available and to whatever the local discretion might be or desires might be relative to the remaining local funds that were collected previously from the impact fees, noting that those funds are perishable and that there are decisions to make in order to move forward and expend those funds in a timely manner.
Any discussion from the board?
Commissioner Melvin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just what's the date, the timeline on that, on the perishability of the funds?
Yes, it's going to be in 2015.
We have these three projects that were in the TIP that require local impact fees as a funding source. One of the two... One of the three projects has funding allocated from the DOT. That's the pedestrian overpass, but that is allocated in 2015 for the PDNE. So, the PDNE will likely stretch at least into 16, I would think. So, we won't be able to expend those funds. Really, I think what we need to do is come up with a plan for our impact fee revenue that we have. We have about almost $2 million in Area 3 impact fees that are remaining. We have sidewalk projects that we have expended some of those funds on in the past. We have the enhanced shoulder project that will kick off on Highway 98 later this year that's going to utilize a portion of those, but those have been netted out. So, there's actually $2 million remaining in the Area 3 impact fees that have to be spent within the next 30 months.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Melvin.
In acknowledging your comments about the pedestrian crossover, which is a life safety issue, then that moves on my personal meter, and this is just for consumption, but right now, that leaves the other two projects, which one would be providing the Navar community with a east... Pardon me. With an east-west corridor that would function to relieve the traffic on 98, reduce the load, so that the community could shop at the Publix area and the Windexie area without having to access Highway 98 to do so. So...
My only comment there for the Navar Community Access Road, there's $2 million in the tip, but that's just for a PDNE. So, we would be able to fund the PDNE for that, but then there is no available funding on the horizon for actual construction. So, rather than do an engineering study that's going to sit on the shelf, I would like to see us come up with some projects that are actually going to put concrete on the ground, like we've done, you know, on 399 and the improvements that we're making on Highway 98. I think people, they see those improvements. It's tangible. They enjoy that. I think with the impact fees that we have, we could expand our pedestrian and bicyclist safety program in the south end of the county. I know District 5, we have a fairly significant study of bicyclist and pedestrian improvements that can be made. That came out of the District 5 Recreational Advisory Committee some four years ago, and we could update that and dust it off. And then I would say we do the same thing down in the Navar area, and let's get some... Take that, the impact fees that remain and utilize it to put, again, concrete on the ground. Get something tangible out there that people can see, that they can enjoy, that will actually improve safety. And again, with $2 million, we can do a lot of good for the people down in the south end of the county, and that's the direction I would like to see us go with that. Commissioner Cole?
Yep. I agree 100% with Commissioner Lynchard. Taxpayers want to see things on the ground, not things on the shelf, but in sidewalks and bicycle paths, pedestrian safety. I would just like everybody, and certainly life safety's important, to really take a hard look, though, at a crossover versus... And not that it'd be a bad idea, but a crossover would be a singular area where people could get across Highway 98. It would consist of elevators, maintenance on those, and quite frankly, if I'm a quarter mile or eighth of a mile down the road where I've parked, and I'm looking in line waiting to get on an elevator that I've got to walk to, go across 98, and then wait for the elevator to come back across, different type of things like that, I don't think we'd accomplish what we want to accomplish in a one pedestrian crossover instance, because you can't park everybody right on either side of it. What I'd really like this board to look at would be multiple crossing areas using the traffic lights that exist and having the means of pushing a button and making those crossings safe. And I think that's something we can accomplish. Like you say, people want to see things get done. This way, we have multiples that we already have, maybe even add a few just particular crossings with a light that you push a button and people walk across to get across more rapidly.
If I'm not mistaken, I think all of our traffic lights down on 98 have now been upgraded. They're all pedestrian-actuated. The... I know the overpass, I'll let Commissioner Melvin speak to it. I still think it's a very important project, just because of the scope of the events that we have down there in the Navar Park. I just think it's not going to fall within our window this time, and we'll have to rely on funding from the state. Commissioner Melvin?
Yes, sir. The thing that takes the surface-level crossovers out of the equation almost totally is the delay that it adds to the traffic on 98 every time you stop that traffic. That delay accumulates. So, a lot of folks that understand that better than most of us have said, you know, probably the way to do that is with an overpass, because you don't add to the delays. And those of us that use 98 on a regular basis understand what a gaggle it gets to be. If you're in a 10-car line, 15-car line, and the average, I'm told, is eight seconds from the time the light changes until the car in front of you moves, well, that time accumulates as you move further back in the line. And if we had surface-level crossovers like you would normally expect to see, which, you know, on the surface seem to make the most sense, all you've done there is compound the problem on 98. But we'll... There are certainly some other projects where our sidewalk projects interface at the B.O. is something the community wants, but in consult with Mr. Whitfield, that's... It's doable. But we've got permits. We'll have... His best estimate right now is up to a six-month closure of 399 at the bridge, yeah, which would be very inconvenient. Those folks on your side of the bridge would have to go to 98 and come out. Folks on my side of the bridge would have to come 399 to 87 to come out regardless of whether they're trying to go to Pensacola or Milton. But we're... We'll continue to look at that. It may be that there's work around... There's a lot of value to doing the pedestrian connection between the two, because it would give Mr. Whitfield a way... It would provide emergency bridge situation if something were to occur with that Tom King B.O. bridge. It would be sturdy enough that one-way traffic for his stuff could come and go, but to put a crane in the middle of 399 to set those steel bridge pile and build is just really going to gum up the traffic on 399. It may come down to that's just what we have to do, but those are one of the considerations. And again, to reiterate, the surface, the normal way of handling pedestrian traffic on 98 would only compound the problems that we have on 98. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Eda?
Eda Lawler, 2532 Cedar Crest Lane. I've mentioned this over and over and over, the Walmart Panhandle traffic light on 98, if there would be some way. And it's just, you know, I drive in and out there quite a bit. I live in a subdivision that I end up cutting down through the subdivisions, going Panhandle to Walmart, but I have to pull out onto 98, and I started watching traffic. How many of us are doing this? We're at the light, we're tying up the light, we make our left-hand turn, or we come out of Walmart, we jump into traffic, tires are screeching, and then we make our right-hand turn on Panhandle. At the end, I think Timber Lane, there's just a little short patch. You know, if the trees weren't there, you could jump the ditch and make it from Walmart to Timber Lane, and then that way, that would alleviate the traffic, which sometimes in the morning backs up a Panhandle, making the left-hand turn onto 98, because it would divert those people that want to go do their grocery shopping and stuff from going on to 98. It's just something I've noticed over the years, and I know that Avis has the skills that it wouldn't take much to do that.
Yeah. And that, you know, that sounds like a good suggestion. You know, I think maybe the original recommendation that Commissioner Lynchard had, let us come back to you, let staff come back to you, let's look at what are some options for the... And I don't know if maybe there's some intersection improvements we can do. We just kind of need to look at that whole area down there and just see what we can do. Obviously, we know about the sidewalks. If there's some kind of connection on this that Ms. Lawler's talking about, we certainly can look at that. I mean, I don't know. I mean, there may be some things that would...
That's the Timber Lane extension.
That's correct. I got you. Okay. I'm on it. It's over 10. That was the one I was addressing first. You know, that in a perfect world where there was... Cost was no objective, you know, was no barrier to what you were trying to accomplish. That would remove a lot of...
accomplish, that would remove a lot of traffic from 98 as the local traffic was able to move back and forth.
Do we need to leave this on for Thursday?
I believe the, I believe one of the things we're trying to accomplish is that obviously the transportation improvement program that's listed in your TPO projects, they're going to kind of fall out unless we've identified we're going to spend some. So I think as long as we all understand that these are going to fall out, if we have identified and say we're going to spend it on this, then that's part of what we need to accomplish here.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Melvin?
I do, just for clarification, and I'm sure for most people watching at home, when you say "fall out," what does that mean exactly?
Well, they have a five-year list, and Sean's here, and he can help me with this if I mess up. But anyway, there's...
I understand the transportation list. I'm wondering about the real dollars that are in a bank account somewhere. They're not going to go anywhere, are they? Is somebody going to take them away from us? Will the state?
No, no. I mean, these are just projects on a list, and they're going to fall off that list unless they're financially feasible.
But the dollars are not in jeopardy of going anywhere?
No. The only dollars that are potentially in jeopardy are those perishable impact fee dollars that in 2015 we need to have...
Which are the dollars I intended you to be answering to? I probably didn't frame the question correctly then. Where will those dollars go? Will the state confiscate them? What happens to them?
They would have to be refunded by the county.
To the people that paid the...
Right.
Okay, thank you. That was my question.
All right. So we do not need to take the action on Thursday?
I guess unless we have any, a particular list for you to, I think we hear what you're saying. I think if, you know, unless we have, and most of that's going to come from probably Roger and Avis relative to the listing and cost involved, we can, the owner will either have something or not relative to that, that local list.
All right. So nothing on Thursday at this point? All right. Thank you. Item six, discussion of a floodplain variance request for 7402 Mulberry Lane in Navarre. I'll turn this over to Mr. Gomillion. I'll also note that I will be abstaining from the vote on this. I've done some work with the builder in the past.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have a request that the shepherds have made relative to a lot at 7402 Mulberry Lane in Navarre for a floodplain variance. There's discussion there. I believe Mr. White, is he here? Mr. White's here. You want to come forward, Mr. White? Mr. White can state their request relative to this variance.
This is a sound front home that is proposed to be built on a piece of property whose elevation is higher than the FEMA flood zone identification. It's in an AE9 zone, and the property's at roughly 10 feet. So, the options that are restricted by the land development code, because it's within 200 feet of the water, require that it be built on pilings, even though it's higher than the existing floodplain elevation would require it, according to FEMA standards. So this creates a conflict between what the land development code currently requires and what the latest FEMA 550 guidance allows and directs the building officials to, how to decide what kind of foundation to allow to be built there. So, in order to reconcile the latest guidance from FEMA 550 and the current land development code, Rhonda Rhodes, the building official, recommended that we just take it out of the flood zone since the terrain's already higher than the AE9 flood zone. Well, in order to do that, the FEMA requires that the elevation certificate be submitted as a completed project, as opposed to a proposed project. So that's why she's recommended that we apply for a variance so that we can build in accordance with the FEMA 550 guidance and in the end comply with the land development code. Just to give you a little bit of background of how this conflict arose, the land development code was amended after our experience with Ivan. FEMA came in and amended their guidance after the experience with Katrina. And when they did that, they did a comprehensive study of the damage to homes throughout the Gulf Coast, and they recommended various prescriptive solutions to waterfront properties and how to build properly. They did an exhaustive study to show what could be done and how to do it properly. And they also created a decision-making process for the local building officials. Well, this was quite a bit more substantial effort to properly provide for engineered solutions along the Gulf Coast than the land development code ever contemplated in our response to the experience we had with Hurricane Ivan. So, in order to come up to the latest current standards of prescriptive foundation solutions and decision-making, this variance is how we're going to accomplish that, plus still maintain compliance with the land development code.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, just to further state what we, what the variance would be asking for, it is, as he expressed, the property is in, within 200 feet of the coastal area, so that it is what is called a V-zone. V-zone construction standards are required under our ordinance, and that means pilings. And of course, what we're varying, or their request can vary it from, it would be piling construction. And then the three-foot freeboard that our ordinance added after Ivan is also part of that variance. In other words, the elevation would not meet the three-foot freeboard. Those are the two things that are being asked to vary, the construction standard and the elevation. Although their elevation, even with their construction, they're just missing the three-foot freeboard, just a small amount. 11.63, I think, and 12 feet is the required.
Right. And actually, when the job's done, we're going to be at 20 feet to the lowest horizontal construction member.
I do believe, though, the, there's going to be a restroom in the lower portion that is...
Yes, sir.
That does drive the habitable space from the code standpoint.
Bottom line is, is, if it's only a couple of inches, is that what you're saying, the difference between the...
Yes, I believe it's 1163 and in that range, and 12, 12 feet would be the requirement with the freeboard. So we're looking at a minimal variance from, 1133 is what the slab is for the bottom, and if the requirement is 12, basically 12. So we're varying the construction standard or the piling type home and the, and a minimal variance in elevation.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Williamson, nothing. He had his final.
I just had a question for the county attorney as to what the legality would be if we were to allow this variance request.
I don't believe you subject yourselves to any liability based on the variance.
Then I'd recommend we move it to Thursday agenda without objection.
Commissioner Williamson read my mind. I was concerned that if we granted the variance and then something untoward's happened, that we would put ourselves in a position of some liability. The other question I just wanted to get cleared up by Mr. Gomillion was that the restroom, there'd be a restroom that would be high far below that area?
Restroom would be at the 1163. What he had mentioned was that the actual space, the whole main part of the home would be at 20?
Yes, sir.
20 feet, okay.
They're going to build a stem wall foundation.
Right. But the restroom, the lower level restroom will be like eight inches.
That's correct.
That would be what needs a variance. Thank you very much.
That's correct.
Appreciate it.
Jerry Cooley, 6049, on his way. Through the years, it seems like every time we do one of these variances, it comes back to bite the taxpayers. I know recently we've bought a couple houses that was built in a low-line area, and I just want to, I'd like to hear some assurances that down the road, when these folks are unhappy that water came in their house, that Jerry and the rest of the taxpayers don't have to buy it from them. Thank you. That was a question.
I think Ms. Jones already said there was no liability that would be associated with the county in response to Commissioner Williamson's question.
And to my knowledge, we've not granted very many variances from this since it was implemented in 2004, early 2005, maybe. And again, these are, I mean, these are just minimum changes. I mean, we've never wholesale disregarded our requirements.
Well, and it would be up to the owner to provide flood insurance, and we're not going to be one of these buybacks on this property here.
If I may add, once the project is completed, it will be taken out of the flood zone entirely.
Mr. Chairman? Commissioner Williamson moved it to Thursday agenda without objection.
Hearing no objections, it passes. Thank you.
And that concludes Public Services. Mr. Chairman?
All right, thank you, Commissioner. Move now to Public Works Committee. This time we do have Commissioner Williamson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have two items today. The first one is discussion of requests from the Champions Green Three Homeowners Association for acceptance of right-of-way deed and paved road and drainage maintenance for Champions Green Drive. According to the backup, the work has already been performed to county standards and specs, and the documents are completed and ready for acceptance by the county. And I recommend we move this to Thursday agenda without objection.
Hearing no passes.
Item two is discussion of extension of contract with Panhandle Graven and Paving Incorporated for one year at the current rates, and this is recommended by road and bridge. And if there's no question or discussion, I recommend we move this to Thursday agenda without objection.
Hearing no passes.
And that concludes my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Now we'll move to Budget. Commissioner Melvin?
Mr. Chairman, we have a citizen's debate.
Let me just interject. I apologize. Maybe the county attorney could explain to me how something that is near the water can be removed from a floodplain when we had 35 feet of water that came in from a hurricane. How is that possible? And with that thought, are we saying that this individual is not going to be required to have flood insurance on this house? I mean, that was his statement, that it would be removed from the floodplain. I don't see how that's possible.
I heard that statement as well. The request for us and what was granted was a variance.
It's still going to be in a floodplain. You're granting a variance on how the construction of the house is going to be done?
Yeah, we don't have the authority to, we don't establish the floodplain.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
It will still be in a floodplain.
I can answer. But what he has stated was the, they had pursued a map amendment, what is called a map amendment through FEMA, and FEMA indicated to them that the, they would not grant the map amendment pre-construction. There's likelihood that they may grant it post-construction. That map amendment essentially takes into account the specifics of a lot, and so that, it's in their discretion to apply for a map amendment to a previously designated. So it's a FEMA decision. And that is a potential, that they would come, that they would be granted a map amendment and be taken out of a floodplain. It would not be our action. No.
Commissioner Melvin?
Are we ready for budget finance? I said, we ready for the budget finance?
Please.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have four items this morning. Item number one is discussion of budget amendment 2013-126 in the amount of $75,292 to recognize the Doris Schlossberg Driver Education Safety Act revenue for fiscal year 12 in the amount of $36,827 and $38,465 that would be FY 2013, earned to date, and distribute those funds to the driver's education programs for the Santa Rosa County in the general fund. I recommend we move this to Thursday without objection.
Hearing no passes.
Item number two is discussion of budget amendment 2013-127 in the amount of $120,000 to resurface Langley Street, which is an entrance road to the west gate of Whiting Field, to be funded from franchise fees for road and drainage as approved in the May 9th Board of County Commissioners' regular meeting. I recommend we move this to Thursday without objection.
Hearing no passes.
Item number three is discussion of budget amendment 2013-128 in the amount of $15,000, which will fund the purchase of GIS application for the economic development in partnership with the Florida Power and Light statewide discount program as approved at the May 9th Board of County Commissioners' regular meeting. These will be coming from the general fund, and I recommend we move this to Thursday without objection.
Hearing no passes.
Item number four is the county expenditures and check register, and I will have that reviewed, prepared for your signature by Thursday morning, and I recommend we move this to Thursday without objection.
Hearing no passes.
That concludes my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner. At this time, is there any other comments from the board or staff? And we'll open it now to public forum.
Eda Lawler, 2532 Cedar Crest Lane, Navarre, Florida. Commissioners, when I speak to you or I email you with a concern, you can pretty much take it to the bank. I've done some research on something, whether it's an environmental thing or whatever. I get my definitions, and I do an investigation and the research, so that I'm actually on track in what I bring forth to you. I became involved in watching what's happening at our local government, speaking out on issues. Because of what goes on here at the local government level has a profound effect on the quality of place, quality life, and life's chances. After a couple things happened this past January and February, I could see problems continuing to happen. It prompted me to contact the state attorney's office, because as a resident and a taxpayer, I did not want to see procedural element misunderstandings, invalidated ordinance, or statutory oversight become costly to this county. Hopefully, you can understand it was a difficult decision for me to take my concerns to the state's attorney. But I was getting the feeling no one was listening. No one understood my concerns. My correspondence delivered to the state's office of state attorney focused on the solid waste ordinance for illustration. There are other ordinances. But I picked that one for illustration because it's what I call a perfect storm, to use as an example. It had both the enactment procedural and other statutory requirement issues. Approving and amending an ordinance, I feel, is one of the most important aspects of your job. I think sometimes board members, which includes the zoning board members, rely on staff that looks out a window. Often, the public looking into the window has a better understanding on the way things should be done. should be done. Hopefully, the county will look forward and improve on the ordinance development process to achieve the best possible changes in the land development code. I suggest you have a proposed ordinance draft the day, done, the day those published notice, notices hit the newsstand. Make sure the place that is stated in the published notice of intent, where the proposed ordinance may be inspected by the public, has a copy of the proposed ordinance available for the public. Upload the proposed ordinance to the county website the day those published notices hit the newsstand. When you receive citizens' comments before the public hearing, upload the comments to the website. If something comes up and staff realizes there is a big oops, after the notice of intent is published while the proposed ordinance is resting, I suggest inserting a comment balloon so the public can see what the oops revision will be. But do not delete any portion of their original text on a proposed ordinance while they are at rest. But I suggest when something comes up, insert like a balloon so the public and you can see this is something that is, needs to be reworded or something. I have no, I have no problem at public hearings on a proposed ordinance, if the commission or the zoning board chair wants to state, please keep public comments as brief as possible and praying from being repetitive. But I do have a problem if an interested party is denied the right to be heard. I don't see it happen often in here, but it happens at zoning board. A chairman can have a strong feeling on a subject, but a chair position is to regulate the proceedings and ensure all shades of the opinions are given a fair hearing. The stakeholders to the decisions made in this room are all the residents of Santa Rosa County, all residents, whether you look at them as a major or minor stakeholder, all are equal in the decision-making process. To the end, what I have to say, I request you set some procedural guidelines, especially for the zoning board meetings. I suggest that you make it so the chairman understands the right to be heard and stuff like that. I also suggest that you maybe make a, that they cannot, not table more than one ordinance item twice. The first go-around, they can table it, continue to the next meeting, but don't let it happen like the Wellfield, where they just kept table and table, and nothing really got accomplished there. It just, it just seemed to be controlled, funny controlled media. I'm not gonna get any more comments on that. But anyway, if they have it on their table twice and they can't make a decision, kick it up to you folks. Thank you.
Thank you.
Wallace Mahoot, 5500, Cox Road, Milton, Florida. Today, I'm just gonna give you an example of, of what we're talking about, of something that happened the way it did. At the January 30th, 2012 Wellfield Work Group meeting, a vote of one to five from the Wellfield Work Group to prohibit large quantity generators from the Wellfield Protection Area, and a vote of four to 15 from the public guests at that meeting also indicated that the public stakeholders also wanted large quantity generators prohibited from the Wellfield Protection Area. There was a large group of public present at that meeting, and they made an effort to go there and to vote and tell everybody that they did not want large quantity generators in the area. And then we, we came to April 2012. When I was looking over the ordinance that was developed, that Becky had developed, I noticed that large quantity generators were not listed as being prohibited in the Wellfield Protection Area. And I sent her an email. I said, Becky, I noticed that large quantity generators are not mentioned in the ordinance. At the Wellfield Meetings, the vote was for not allowing these by both public, and I remember that Ken Walker also said, there should not be large quantity generators near the water wells. So Becky answered me back, and she said, I agree. Thanks for catching that. Then, the proposed ordinance for the June 28th, 2012 Commissioners Meeting prohibited large quantity generators. In the draft for the September 27th, 2012 meeting, the large quantity generators was removed. It's there, then it's gone. It's there, then it's gone. No discussion. It was never brought up in public. It wasn't discussed before the board, and it just kept appearing and not appearing. Behind the scenes and out of the public eye, between the first Commissioners' June 28th, 2012 meeting on amending Land Development Code 6.05.25, and the second meeting, September 27th, 2012, 6.05.25, removed large-scale generators of hazardous waste-producing businesses. When questioned where the change originated, Becky Cato stated that removing large quantity generators from the list of prohibited uses was based on feedback from Allen Isaacson, staff, and commissioners, and that's, that's all well and good. They also get to have input on that. What I am stating, though, is that Allen Isaacson had input, staff had input, commissioners had input, and those people who attended that meeting that day, and the members of the Wellfield Work Group also, had a great input. We spent hours and hours going to those meetings. We researched large quantity generators. We were very knowledgeable on those large quantity generators of hazardous waste, and the members of the, most of the members of the Wellfield Work Group and the public that attended that meeting today said, we don't want them in our Wellfield Protection Area. And the ordinance, from then on, there was never any discussion. Nobody brought up the, the public interest, and it disappeared from the ordinance. And to me, that was very disappointing. I would have liked to see you guys been informed of that, like you were informed about Allen Isaacson and others who had, and staff, but also the public. That is very important, that you had this public opinion, and it wasn't up for discussion, and large quantity generators was dropped from being put in that ordinance, and that's all I have to say today. Thank you.
Jerry Cooley, 6049, on his way. I have two or three items here, but, but I'd like the board and staff to know that, that I appreciate these two citizens, the time and effort they put into it, and I too have problems with, when we put something in the newspaper that says, we're gonna consider this ordinance, and during that two-week period, that ordinance gets changed a dozen times, and then the Board of County Commissioners vote on it, I just firmly believe that's improper. You complete an ordinance, Board of County Commissioners agree on it, put it in the newspaper, allow for public comment, change it at the next meeting, but the continuous changes, and, and, look, and I'll use, I'll use the word, behind closed doors. I don't think we've been upfront with that as much as we should be.
I can tell you that it's the policy of the county attorney's office to draft an ordinance. At times past, we have used a working draft, frankly, so that the citizens could see the thought process. This lies chiefly with me. I forgot to insert this. Let me go back and add it. Our goodness, this doesn't make real good sense. Let me pull it out. So that hopefully, those changes can be demonstrated, and people see those changes going on. Because of concerns raised by different folks, we have discontinued the process of the working draft, so that once it is drafted, that is the only one that will be in existence until the board takes action at a next meeting. So actually, the changes were incorporated, were put there to better demonstrate what was going on. Perhaps, not everybody recognized that that was the goal, so, but there are changes that have been implemented to, to address the concerns that have been raised.
Well, I, I think it's, I think we're where we need to be. Write the ordinance, specific language, everybody gets to look at it. By all means, if the Board of County Commissioners wanna change that two weeks from that period, let's have a discussion and talk about it. But verbiage is getting changed too much. Second item, newspaper recently, and I'll say upfront, I don't disagree on the issue of five companies, Board of County Commissioners wanna have a private discussion with them. I'm okay with that. My concern, and what I never did get clearance on, that meeting will be videotaped, minutes will be taken, and, and what I'm unclear on is, will that be made available before the Board of County Commissioners make a decision on whatever that item might be?
It is our custom that we make decisions at the end of the interviews. I don't know that that always takes place, but it has always taken place in my tenure here, that we rank, we interview, we rank, and we make a decision then, in which case, the videotape would become immediately available. If, however, the decision is put off some period of time, then it's possible they wouldn't be immediately available. Now, there are some timeframes included in the statutory exception that we'll, of course, have to comply with no matter what.
Right. One of the things that I will say in general about our county versus east and west of us is, we have done a pretty good job in, in including the public, and I do appreciate that. I will have to say, and, and this is more to the Board of County Commissioners, I hope you guys understand the importance of, even though you may have made up in your mind, five people come in here, you interview them, you decide. I still think it would, it would be to the benefit of you for buy-in by the public, and I just think it's the right way to go for there to be one additional meeting, whether it be at the next county commission meeting, whatever. This is what we glean from this. The public has an opportunity to look at the videotape, to see the minutes, to see all the numbers involved, and whatever the subject might be, and then make your decision after you hear from the public, because it's the public, in most cases, that's having to pay for these services, things, that nature, just a suggestion. My, my, my last issue here is, and, and I tell you, I'm gonna have to be firm on this one. A request has been made, and I, and I agree with the request, and I wanna see it myself, in the, in the recent hiring of economic development person, the request has been made to see the salary ask for whatever the top six or seven candidates are. That seems to be, have batted around several times. So I, Jerry, am gonna make that request today, and, and like I said, I'm gonna have to be firm on it. State Attorney's Office says you have seven days to fulfill a records request. I'll get the quote for you if you want me to, Angie. The, the problem here is that Mr. Walker stated during that county commission meeting, he mentioned the number that one of them had asked for, okay? So we know that those discussions were held. It may just be a point of contention here, but we know what those people asked for. Citizens, other citizens, and I myself have asked for that, and I'm gonna have to insist that it be handled.
Public records cover documents, videotapes, memorandums, et cetera. There, there is not such a, I'll use the general term document, but there isn't such a document that we can produce.
And it's knowledge that you have, and that is what's being requested.
I just don't think you can get my knowledge, Jerry. As valuable as it is, is, I, in the words, these are, any discussion I have, I mean, every discussion I have is, is in, I don't believe that I had even verbal understanding or knowledge, if you will, of all seven, I don't know that there were seven. The ones that I had were, were all discussion unless somebody wrote it down, and Angie provided all the numbers. Those are just conversations that I've had. I mean, I'm...
And, and that's fine. Is your official position as a county attorney that you're not gonna fulfill my request? That's, that's where we need to get.
My official position as the county attorney is we don't have such a document.
Okay.
Document being the general term for public record.
That's fine. Thank you.
I'm concerned about being waterboarded for it or something, and y'all couldn't stand the screaming.
Just a couple quick comments. Etta Lawler, 2532, Cedar Crest Lane. I'm gonna suggest when you do your interviews on contracts and stuff, do your interviews, do them behind closed doors. I recall when you did the waste hauling service for the south end, you kicked everybody out. But during the meeting, you could see, even in the video, somebody with a significant interest leaving after all the first interview guys were being interviewed. I think that's important, lock everybody out. But don't make a vote at the end of the interviews. Let it rest, you know, maybe have an interviews on Wednesday, and then the next Monday meeting, commission meeting, take a vote or something. Let the public have some input. As far as what Angie's saying, that her working draft was to do the best stuff, that completely defeated it. What I'm saying is, draft the ordinance, let the ordinance rest. There's no problem having a working draft, as long as you put the balloons in. You know, Commissioner Lynchard feels this, Etta feels that, Jesse Rigby feels this. You can do the balloons, but leave the original text alone. Just add the comments. That would be good. But what was done on that solid waste was not improve any ordinance. It totally made it a disaster, and was a complete embarrassment for Commissioner Lynchard, because he's used it, kept referencing it in February. Wallace's thing, when she got up there, she, I think she was on, it was the June to September meeting. In June, the ordinance was before the board. You didn't talk about large quantity generators of hazardous waste, nothing. You didn't suggest moving it. So there was not per se any big tweaking done to the ordinance. So that ordinance should have been left to rest until September public hearing. And comments could have gone in, balloons, that the commissioners want this removed, but don't... but don't do it behind closed doors. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Lynchard.
Thank you. It's been brought up a couple of times today, so I think we may as well go ahead and address it, either we address it today or tomorrow. Just, I'm going to throw this on the table, let y'all, you know, think what you will about it. Tomorrow, when we do, after we listen to the presentations, I don't feel that we should wait to rank. I think it's fresh in our minds. I think we go ahead and rank at that point. We won't actually award the contract until a later meeting, though. But we will rank. I think that's the prudent thing to do, while it's fresh in our minds. Those are just my thoughts.
And that's your normal procedure? In other words, you typically direct staff to negotiate a contract, bring back a contract with the apparent number one, and then in the event that that doesn't materialize, then we would go to number two and number three?
We have a gentleman that's been sitting out here this entire meeting for opportunity to speak to this Board, and if you want that opportunity, you better get your tail up to the podium right now, because we're fixing it, Jared.
Thanks, sir.
I need your name and address for the record.
I appreciate you having me. I am here to talk about some problems I'm having in my neighborhood. I live in North Milton on Highway 178, next to Bruce Holland. We bought this property for $150,000.
Sir, you had to start with your name and address, please. Name and address.
My name is Timothy Dillard, and I live at 4771 Highway 178. My wife and I bought this property for $150,000, and we considered it our dream property, almost 13 acres. Gave us a chance to have horses, cows. I've always wanted enough room for my kids, ride their four-wheelers, dirt bikes around. Well, it seems that from the first week we bought this property, the neighbor wasn't too happy about it being sold. Turns out, the property used to belong to them. Well, this neighbor then takes a tractor and piles a three-foot-high mound of dirt, 880 feet along my property line. Of course, you know, we aren't farmers, never, you know, couldn't realize, imagine why he would do that, but we just figured the man wanted us to know where his property line was. What turns out, what he did was purposely dam up our property. Our property flooded for 200 feet every time we'd get a two- to three-day rain. So I called the county, asked the county, "What can I do about this situation?" The man, I can't remember, quite remember his name, but he told me that I could hire a private attorney and sue him. Instead of doing that, I chose to try to be a good neighbor, and I hired Sessions Land Clearing to dig me a ditch 880 feet down the side of my property, and went and asked for an application from the county to finish the ditch into the county right-of-way, so it would, the water would drain out into the county right-of-way. It was granted, the work began, and probably a week after the man got started, this particular neighbor was down at the county having it stopped, claiming that it was sending the water to his house, which in all actuality, it wasn't. It was just putting it right out there in the county right-of-way, right down the road. Well, since that seemed to have made him mad, then that's when the trash being dumped in our driveway, and the busted bottles started happening. And so I set up a game camera to catch this individual. I wanted to know who was busting the bottles, who was dumping the trash in my driveway. And what it caught was the neighbor spray painting "F you bitch" on my gate, and stealing my cattle sign. So the police were called, and the police come out, and the officer told me, "Hey, you're not welcome here. You're new here. Just spray paint over it. Try to forget about it." So that's what we did. We spray painted over the graffiti, tried to move on with it. Well, the busted bottles, the trash continues. Well, then, we started getting complaints, started hearing about the complaint style, "My cow's poop stinks, and my horse's poop stinks." Again, this is on 13 acres. So it continues to get worse and worse and worse, to where the point to where we go out there, and now they're jamming wood in my gate locks, so we can't open the gate to get on to access the property to feed our animals. See, I don't have a house there yet, nothing. This is just flat 13 acres. So I make a couple complaints against that, and, of course, nothing's happening. You know, already had the pictures of the boy tearing my, or vandalizing my stuff. Police don't even want to look at that. So we start, we sell the house, we have a house in East Milton. We sell that house, start to begin a house in here on 178. Soon as the construction starts, we start getting the gunfire over our heads, which I don't know if you've ever had a gunshot over your head, but a bullet going by your head is not a fun sight. When it happens when your children are outside, believe me, it makes me pretty angry. Well, we suffered this, and suffered this, and suffered this. Well, so we build the house, move in it in October, the end of 2011. So we was there a month, and this particular person had all of his friends, I think there was over 30 hunters lining up against my property here, and shooting their rifles and their shotguns. All the bullets landing on our vehicles, on our house, damaging my property. Police were calling, the police told me that I called the wrong people. I should call the game commission. Well, the bullets and all continued, scratched my wife's Lexus up, scratched my truck up, continued to land on our house. While we're standing there, you can hear the bullets just landing on the ground. So that was, and then it happened again on December 28th. So that, I guess, that wasn't good enough. So on New Year's Eve, my wife and I are sitting on our back porch, moons out, all the stars, enjoying our first New Year's Eve in our brand-new house, and we watched the neighbor walk a half-mile up his field, to our backyard, and at New Year's, shoot his rifle over our house. You can see it, I mean, plain as day, him and someone else. So, of course, nothing's going to be done about it. He walks right back to the house. So that was New Year's. So on the 4th, this person, while my son was riding his dirt bike in our backyard, he rides his four-wheeler up the edge of the road, hides over in the woods, and shoots his rifle over our heads again. Of course, nothing's going to be done about it. The 6th, he does the same thing from behind my property. The 8th, he does the exact same thing from across the street over here. All that wasn't good enough. So then, he goes and makes ads on Craigslist, giving my cattle away. Then, that wasn't good enough, so he made another ad on Craigslist, giving our washer and dryer away. So you can imagine all the people showing up at my houses with trailers and stuff, thinking they're going to get my cattle, because I'm giving them away for free. The over 80 phone calls we got from people wanting to come get our washer and dryer, because we're giving them away for free. So the 11th comes around, the day for my son's birthday. My son and I are out in the backyard, and I'm watching him ride his dirt bike around. He rides his four-wheeler up again, hides over in the bushes, shoots his rifle over our head, and you could hear, I don't know if you've ever heard a bullet go by your head, but it sounds like this. Just like that. I mean, that's how close these bullets are, and it's just for intimidation. Well, on the 12th, they come over to the same property, start building a pig fence, so that's going to pile pigs up. We've already, I was already been told, they bragging about they're going to pile pigs up against our yard here. So by this time, six years' worth of harassment, I've had enough, and I'll walk over and tell him, "If you shoot that rifle over our heads again, I'll shove it up your ass." Well, of course, the cops come, and they arrest me for it. Well, I've gone through the legal system, hired a lawyer, and got six months probation. Well, so now, since all of this, so now they pile up a whole bunch of junk farm equipment right on my property line, which continues to harbor rats, snakes. This year alone, in the last two months, I've killed two rattlesnakes, some kind of a black snake, and something like a coral snake. I don't know the difference between the red, black, and yellow, but I can tell you that's what the colors it was, which makes my cattle and my horses, whenever a snake crawls across there, it spooks my horses and my cattle. They'll run right through my electric fence. It won't bother them at all, and if I touch my electric fence, it'll feel like it about knocks your arm off. So you can imagine how powerful it is. For them to run right through it, they're scared to death. So now, they put them a big giant four-foot-by-five-foot "Jesus Loves You" sign at my driveway, and they've also put up a camera, taking pictures of me and my wife and my children coming and going from our property. Now, if this isn't some kind of harassment, you tell me what is.
County Attorney?
It seems very apparent Mr. Dillard and his neighbor have a problem, and I know you've been advised before to seek and get a private attorney and pursue it civilly, and I know you're here because maybe that's not the advice you want to hear again, but it is the direction that I would point you. Certainly, what you've described, I would think, has some criminal elements, and you may want to pursue that with the Sheriff's Department, and I think has some civil elements as well, where you could get redressed through the civil court system. Our code enforcement folks have looked at the farm equipment and that kind of thing, and I've seen that. It doesn't rise to the level of being a code compliance issue, but I'll say that the bulk of what you described wasn't, the equipment wasn't the biggest problem you were describing here. Some of the other things you talked about seem much more significant, and I think there are some avenues for redress. I'm just not sure they lie with the County Commissioners.
Well, I believe that this junk equipment harboring these animals, these snakes, pose a threat against my children and my animals, and if the county continues to allow this type of stuff, it makes the value of my property worthless to have a bunch of junk garbage out there sitting behind my brand-new $350,000 house and property. I believe, and the attorney I'm talking to believes, that it will make the county liable.
Angie?
Your attorney's welcome to call me. Of course, I disagree with that, but your attorney is more than welcome to give me a call.
Okay.
Angie, too.
Thank you, folks.
I'm kidding, Mr. Dillard, just, I'm not trying to step out of my bounds or anything, but we've heard quite a bit from him, and, you know, they've been out in East Milton quite a bit. I've known him and his wife for over 10 years now. Doesn't it seem like, you know, our sheriff should get involved a little more in this? I, there again, not trying to upset my bounds, but I was told before that when you find bullets and know where they came from on your property, that that constitutes trespassing.
I wouldn't suppose to say what the sheriff should and shouldn't do, that's up to the sheriff, but I am certain that if Mr. Dillard will make an appointment, meet with somebody out there, that they'll cover all their bases. I don't doubt that for a moment.
Thank you, sirs. Thank you, ma'am.
All right. Anything else? If not, we are adjourned.